Good morning, welcome to the October 30th meeting in Rockland County Commission. Please stand and join, vladily.
Pleasure to be here, it's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living, liberty and justice for all.
Public comment?
Well, did we officially freeze this morning?
I had 29 at my place, I already had brought it last week at my place, breeze on my garden.
We dropped to 33, so maybe not quite there yet.
Yeah, I had 29.
We're always a little colder at your place. Yeah, okay, well, we're getting close, I guess, I guess about that time of the year, so. Monday afternoon, attended the October intergovernmental luncheon at Rocket Cave, up in the K-State Edge District. After some opening welcomes and introduction, we got an updated discussion on the Heartland Certified Public Managers Program that we're endorsing here. Then we had a cultural asset at K-State's update with the Office of External Engagement Team, which included Todd Holmberg, Executive Director of the Keene Auditorium, Kent Smith, Director of the Marianna Hisler Beach Museum of Art, and lastly, some events and things that are going on up at the K-State Gardens. And then, of course, we concluded that lunch with updates from the various organizations and agencies that were in attendance. Tuesday afternoon, attended the October Board of Directors Meeting with Honey Mental Health via Zoom. Had our usual Finance Oversight Committee meeting, pre-regular meeting to get updated on the agency's financials all the way up and through September. General meeting items included some opening welcomes and introductions, as well as approval of the September minutes, uh, meeting minutes, and had a finance update from Chief Financial Officer Lindsay Miller. And then we had a Finance Oversight Committee report to review from September's finances. A short Chief Officers' Report from Mike Scala. And then that followed an executive session for matters of non-alien business. And as far as me, the rest of the week is spent helping everybody get ready and prepared for upcoming annual inventory, which will start taking place today and tomorrow. And that's been the week.
Okay, um, let's see, Monday afternoon, I attended the intergovernmental meeting at Rocket Cave. It was an unattended meeting, and just some networking, John's presentations. Tuesday, I had an eye checkup, and later, I worked on updating the Keats infrastructure map. It's, uh, it was sewer layout, and put the property owners' names on the layouts. And it's kind of, they're in different orientations from a more map, so it had where it took a while to figure it out, so it will be easier now to answer questions on properties. We'll name some down, so, layout. Wednesday, had PT session and came into the office to go over today's meeting agenda and documents. Um, I, um, I did check where the county council's office, whether it had any easement documents that had come in this week. Um, and then I did some follow-up calls, trying to find some people that we haven't got to easements back on yet. And then in the evening, I did attend the community meal over at Keats. Talking constituents, they won't have another meal till till January, so, a lot of food, I always have so much good food, desserts, and oh my goodness. Um, several, several one updates on how time schedule is proceeding on moving, looking project. But other than that, it was, yeah, it was good.
Good morning, this is intergovernmental luncheon, took us, have you that already? Tuesday was Flood Hills Veterans Meeting. They're viewing final plans for veterans today, parade, and the indoor ceremony. Um, most of it's going well. CPD originally told them, said months ago, that they would be handing all the traffic, including setting up barricades. Came back, my player said, well, we're not doing barricades. Now, so they were scrambling, get someone to, but now they came back, said they're not going to have any presence at all. That's CPD.
That's weird.
Yeah, so they're kind of scrambling, figuring out where traffic control needs. Saying that was our vision, rest of their means went well, but that could change every month. Yeah, so I had enough. Director, we didn't even, we didn't even need to.
No, right, right, is this, there's some, for, I don't have any, much of a tactical corrections?
Go ahead, move to through the tax law corrections as listed.
I haven't said that.
And move in second as you approve to get a tax law correction, so it presented on favor.
Jeremy's son.
There's that, there is.
We haven't had any for a while, so.
I know.
Saved them all.
All at once.
Isn't that, how they come to win us?
Yeah, it's, it was a lot of city ones.
Well, we've been a low as, a low as being on. Okay, so, yeah.
Well, good.
That experience.
What's that?
Two thirty?
Okay, thanks.
Two thirty?
Yeah.
Because there was a thing, I looked, it's at 11:30, 11:30, math time. Two thirty. And this is the way, I'm seeing this.
Making motion to sign the letter and approve resolution 103025, a resolution appointing a representative, in this case Tiffany O'Bell, to the Food and Farm Department.
I would second that.
Good noon, and second to sign the letter and approve resolution 103025, appointing the Representative Tiffany O'Bell to the Food Farm Department, in favor.
All three please sign them. So I take it, the resignation happened in June, but there was no applicant till Tiffany filled out one, or it took us that long?
Yeah, I'm just thinking if you know.
Oh.
Just said that, so I own gaps, sometimes whichever, one links to charge based upon, I don't think. Then again, kind of go after recruiting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I know that, that's the market, so that's, yeah. And basketball, it starts next week. Exciting. We have an exhibition tonight, yeah, or a second exhibition. Well, I'm making plans to go to the K-State Indiana game in Bloomington.
You're, you are?
Yeah, I'll be heading back home for Thanksgiving, so it's right along the way, so. Check off another one of those basketball makers assembly hall.
Make the motion to appoint the voting delegate for KAC that you do leave conference.
The man in the beak, we're just holding up a card.
Yes, how you hold it, uh, seen some commissioners hold them upside down, so you might be sure it's qualified.
Well, I don't, I'm gonna be there sometimes.
Okay, I'm in your chair, so go ahead, say alternate one, and I'll do alternate two, you need to. By me, voting. Okay, um, I'll move to appoint Greg McKinley, uh, McKinley as the voting delegate for the KAC 50th, 50th Annual Conference and Exhibition, and John Ford as first alternative. As Captain Pocky as second alternative. And there's no more alternatives, because there's no more of this, that's the motion.
I would second that.
Moving second to appoint Greg McKinley as voting delegate for the KAC 50th Annual Conference and Exhibition, John Ford as first alternate, and Catherine Pocky as second. Favorite.
Aye.
That's the death of ways with the sleekups. Now, that's when you start listening, we've forgotten, have we, and Thursday?
Right.
We do, and then the next week is Christmas on Thursday, so we give that as New Year's Day on Thursday.
So we, we're getting this year.
One Thursday in four weeks. Might be one.
So I'd have to have a special. Yeah, is that the end of the year, so. Might, we might have much of events, just.
Well, like I said, we'll be, one, but we'll probably have long meetings. Missing much Thursdays. Need a motion to approve payroll.
Um, I will make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
I'll second.
And do the second to approve payroll and accounts payable, on favor.
Aye.
On three, please, second.
Can you get through pay care, it's very often really.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
Do you like to increase that normal? Okay. Thank you, sure, right?
Yeah.
I would do that. Maybe around tax season?
Commissioners? Did you have anything? I wouldn't be able to pull them up, well, online for some reasons, I know, I don't, was it glitch or something? I think I updated something, maybe, but.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 27th meeting.
I'll second.
And move in second to approve the minutes of the October 27th meeting, all in favor of.
Aye.
And agenda with Commissioners?
Good.
Any items for next week's press conference?
Maybe, it happens a bit, I don't know, looks like we have some.
And next show, Mr. Hanson at nine o'clock. Added my notes, wanted to keep there, see, well, I did approve that MOU.
I had to attention.
Have you got, okay.
Yeah, I, uh, got an application of that, uh, in Brussels.
Yeah, she has, she had to get to make the correction, made the wrong.
Yeah, I made the question right. So, thanks.
Good, several even done this, I knew it was the right number, I didn't even, that was.
Yeah.
So, but they, well, they, but there was large group of, and fire volunteers there. Russell done, and zero oppositions.
Zero opposition, ah, that's, that's good.
Yeah, no, it's, like I said, what, they said, yeah, somebody hasn't been wanting our meeting yet about it, they said, even on ours. He was all surprised by that.
Yeah.
Glad that they were able to be inside, and will be before us, and all will be well on that. It'll be easy work, but, uh, that's over there.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty good word, Chris.
I don't know, you talk to either one, sort of, down, you're like.
You gotta put that statement, because I tell them, and here's.
I say, so.
To, all things are, yeah, we have, our A and U, we're still in condition.
I'll say, I will get a, I will count you.
So, yeah, we're swinging it.
All right, nice, we started.
Basically, I can't, for him.
Uh, that was a soft pitch, I don't know, I'm there, I'm on it, either, so I'm gonna do a, I shouldn't, just, um. She didn't have that transition, I need it.
Yeah. It's a good problem, yeah.
We didn't all have it, we decided it was a big deal, they, they had any.
Yeah.
On, I suppose. And, and people didn't, they. Yeah, several, they're like, so, you know.
It's new.
The conference is, uh, they're even having that.
Oh, okay. And, yeah.
And, that's, that's, they're first, well, why don't we do it?
Yeah, and you, you know, well, they're.
No, Robert, maybe he needs. Been here in a while. Said you have, for a while, you've been coming in, that almost every week, it's like, yes, that's what I learned.
Pairing it up back there, Bob, or what? Should, uh, oh, sounded that way.
Oh, yeah.
Got Ben's heart throats, and I was looking for something to come over the wall there, but never.
Yeah, sure.
That's a lot of food.
Oh, yeah, they got some, like, uh, uh, you have to watch, like, uh, yeah, I, too, did, uh, yeah, what, like, what, I just made up that, I want a baseball game, but I don't want to. So I happened to have, uh, yeah. Steve, uh.
So.
Oh, okay. It's my word. No. Oh, okay. Going back there, but that, walking down this, uh, on the stadium. Oh, yeah, okay, oh, I see, that went, that went back, back in time there. Okay, yeah, yeah, on a church, yeah.
It's time, we just, we, the schools.
Okay, that's what, yeah, I, are you gonna be your house?
It's amazing, no, the facets, there's, and, oh, so you mean, you mean, you have, just in, well, there are days, because he's just, no, and I'm hiding in the south, I have a, it's like anybody, in, in water, in order to going down the team, how just in, the game, just, but just the, uh.
Yeah, I, I should have been in football, you know, somewhere else could you, stay only, uh, and get a 50.
Yeah, I know, I guess. Yeah, okay, I could do that, for 1774.
But, you know, like I said, yeah, like she, yeah, we're outside of, uh, and, you know, that gate, that's on, uh, the, or, and, 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 slash, two.
And then, and, and he had a long track record of getting good there, it was just.
I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't asking this question in Ohio State. He, I, I guess, third one, nearly about five, maybe it was the closest you could, they, 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 but, but beyond that. Simple, basically, so much.
And they make it, yeah, uh.
Except it sounded like they, hey, get my, that's, that's, okay, for their, or, actually, to their, like, bar, yeah. I'm not really, I'm, I'm, especially, I'm, I'm, last week, that state, you mean.
Yeah.
Well, you look at some of the, uh, blue blooded schools for basketball, and they're just not, basketball just isn't, yes. She doesn't get any money, you know, so, hey, who's one of them, North Carolina's struggle. Duke's a private school, something.
They're shooting at their service, we, we're on that.
Yeah, they send you states.
Yeah, it's much, yeah. It's too bad, you know. Yeah, okay, yeah, I can do that, whatever you do, yeah, 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 okay.
I hope it plays out, I don't think, you know, it takes a lot down, uh, very, massive exhibition.
Yeah, okay.
Don't put that, yeah, it's, yeah.
So, hey, that's just why, yeah, I don't, yeah. Yeah, I don't get it, usually when I play with some, we just go right before the, yeah, I was just saying, this week, they lost, like, everyone's a season chance, I can just, you know, save your whole game, and he gets chance, looks like he's, well, it's, well, it's, yeah, he's got to play some classes, they're about their, right, and so, yeah.
Yeah, Arizona lost, this was a conference, that was a non-conference loss, so.
It's so crammed in, and, yeah.
That's saying we're two points away from not really looking that bad, with three of that, so much, yeah, not giving us, yeah, a lot of loss, but, but, yeah.
Oh, that's a little, yeah. Oh, yeah, he said.
So we can take, we can take all these, yeah, so, yeah, that there's a lot of teams with, yeah, only one loss, yeah, but all lives.
You don't, it's like, basically, you know, play, you know.
You know, you.
Yeah, they, the teams, I was a swing contest, and it's part of the, it's, it's, like, so, nothing, so we can even have, right, it's, it's not, it's just, it's very, you know, you know, where, so, it's, it's.
I just look at it now, see, that's, but, he's, and all of those games, they, he's, right, he's, so, he, uh, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, just, yeah, so, yeah, four, five, it's, I was, I was, no, I was, I was, no, so I can have all the taxes, same, yeah. I don't, I just, like, meetings, that's, yeah. Yeah, um, slow game, one person, I can't, it's all the way, for people to, get the, yeah, V and M, like, I'm, I'm, Texas, like, Texas, like, this summer. Okay.
You know.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I don't want to get this number, I, I talked to Nate Lewis Saturday, he's like, and last thing he said, my boy, like, all three of you, it's, it's, it's funny, yeah. I think it's, you know, what, how many guys?
Yeah, we're soon to get a shake, you know, that's, that, I, you know.
Well, I guess I told you, I, I, I need to, others, you know, there's a lot of, you know, money, but creepies to NIL, they're, they're all, and, and, now that the budget isn't a player, so, what's gonna happen to the, so, obviously, you know, because, always, you just get that, uh, we, they don't think you get so much, just certain, all of, yeah.
Yeah, you know, yeah, maybe, one, yeah, you must get out of health, that's, yeah.
You have a blue bill here.
Yeah, I guess it's Texas, they said, they're sending me anytime you come, Texas, yeah, which, yeah, this is, yeah, you better, can, I can, can you shoot that, for, for, for the teams, but, every year. Yeah, but he's a good guy, but, yeah. Anyway, I'll talk to you later, yeah.
Oh, muffin? Muffin? No, it's a, it's a ball. Oh, perfect box. Oh, I love. You want the last one? I'll, I'll drink my smoothie.
Good morning Commissioners, Jacob Hansen, Riley County Council.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jacob Hansen, Riley County Councilor here, uh, for our session today. Uh, I have two agreements to go over, uh, and then after the words, we'll follow up with a quick administration, administrative session if necessary. Uh, first, talk about, uh, just an annual agreement, I'm sure you guys recognize and have seen multiple times before, it's regarding the lease of the Higgyville substation. It's used by RCPD, um, pretty much business as usual, as far as the terms within the lease, we have increased it, of course, uh, by, uh. Was it twenty-five dollars a month or three hundred dollars a year, so just a modest increase, uh, Riley County is still very, very much getting the benefit. Uh, of this agreement, and we appreciate. Mister Riffles, um, willingness to work. So unless there's any specific questions on the lease itself, just ask that we go ahead and move to approve the lease.
But made a motion, uh, the board authorized the chairman to sign the lease, uh, for the RCPD substation as presented.
What second that?
It's been moved in second to approve the, uh, lease renewal agreement with. The RCPD Higgyville substation, on a favor.
Aye.
Right, PK Commissioners.
There they sign.
Our. Next agreement. And this one has not been an annual lease, uh, by any means, in fact, that hasn't been touched since, uh, I believe nineteen ninety-two, or at least that was when it was originally. Uh, set in place, uh, so it's been some time since. Uh, this agreement has been looked at, of course, that's for the North Central Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Facility. Um, this is, has a bunch of participating members, I believe Riley County was one of the original members involved. Uh, our chairman, McKinley, uh, is our, uh, voting delegate there and participates in, in that board, um. And so, th- there wasn't much changed in the agreement itself, uh, as opposed to where it was in nineteen ninety-two, really, it was just kind of cleaning up, maybe some typos that were left in there and just. Make sure everything that still applied, uh, in nineteen ninety-two applies to today, thankfully, um, that is the case. So there weren't many changes made, and we would just ask right now, the only thing that's a, a little bit different, uh, in this case, I guess, uh. As to other leases is that we're asking to authorize the chairman to sign at a later date when it's brought in front of the board, uh, for that facility. So, um, that's why, you, you know, you won't be really signing anything today, just authorizing the chairman to sign, uh, when that time comes. And I believe that your meeting is in November. I kept my rough top of my head.
Second, second, third Wednesday.
Right. And so, so what, so what we're doing, uh, is, well, we are signing not the lease, but of course, the resolution here. Um, and this resolution was entered in in order to, uh, sign this first agreement, and so we're just doing the same thing. Um, this, of course, is under a very specific set of statutes, uh, and that's why we kind of have to do this as a resolution, the authority to enter in this agreement is authorized by a very specific set of statutes. Um, and that's why we're doing it as a resolution. Any questions, concerns?
You know, some of the changes they had, the lease of the county system, there's been something added from originally, well, that was one of the changes, uh, displanting. Changes.
Yeah.
Things go.
Yeah, fifteen counties total, uh, are in there as of now. Um, and of course, there's a, a, a funding mechanism or a funding formula that each county pays. Uh, Riley County, I think, has traditionally paid around. And I don't want to get too ahead of myself and say a number that I'm not.
Average use for the last five.
Years.
Right. Average number of days.
And it's, uh, the total, the total cost is set at eight hundred and fifty thousand, and it's divided and then weighted in that manner.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I would make a motion to the group, Resolution Number One Zero Three Zero Two Five. Authorizing Board of Commissioners of Riley County to enter into a inter-local cooperation agreement. Provided for participation in the North Central Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Facility pursuant to KSA, um, twelve dash two nine four.
Well, second.
Moved in second to prove resolution, resolution one O three O two five. A resolution authorizing Board of Commissioners of Riley County to enter into inter-local agreement. With, uh, for participation in the North Central Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Facility. On favor.
Aye.
All of you sign.
Very good. You Commissioners. Um.
This thing, of course, we, it was sent out to Council of Riley County for their review of. Final form.
Yep, and I, I found one typo.
Yeah.
And, uh, that was essentially the only issue that needed to be resolved. And the, uh, I don't know if y'all are aware, but the, uh, the host for that facility is, is Geary County, and, uh. I did speak with their county councillor a bit regarding, uh, the agreement, so. As far as other matters concerning, uh, our administrative work session, let's briefly bring up, of course, we got our county officials launching, uh, or, excuse me, not county officials, our legislative launching. Uh, November twentieth, we just sent out agendas, uh, for that session, uh, last week, I believe. Um, just detailing, of course, the topics to be discussed. Uh, we've had some interest from our local delegates, but not as much as probably we would like, so if you guys have a chance to maybe. Talk with any of the, your colleagues over there, I would definitely encourage it to make sure that we can properly advocate to them, um, the, the interests of Riley County. So. Outside of that, I have, uh, nothing further unless the, the commission has any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
You know, call that special session on.
Yeah.
About many.
I've heard recently they did, they got enough signatures on the Senate side that has to make a.
Yeah, I heard one, so I've had.
Yeah. If, at that night, editing thing, though, that, but, um, that definitely might.
So we use another redistricting.
It, it, well, that's something maybe you guys, okay, so if they end up scheduling this special session. Do we want to move it, cancel it? Do something.
Yeah.
Uh, different, because you're right, and where, if it, if it doesn't.
When did they give any date, when they wanted to?
I don't, I haven't seen any dates thrown out yet about, uh, when it's gonna be, but. And, you know, there, there's definitely been some movement lately, lately, past just a couple of days, so. We'll see where, where, where they go. What was their main topic, it would be?
Redistricting.
Uh, they did. Redistricting, and then there was a Senate Bill, one, one eighty, one eighty, uh, that had to deal with the gender markers on, on, on driver's license.
That's true, I did hear that.
It's about rights, is, is what they. They were dead.
The one.
They called, uh, gender, right, dude. Yeah, generated any gender markers on, on IDs, uh, because, uh, that went, I believe, to the court of appeals and, uh. Turned yours a lot, and lose all that. So now they're looking to address it via. Legislation. Since it didn't work out in court systems.
And they framed it as what? Part of what? You said they kind of framed it as the women's, what?
They call it the Women's Bill of Rights.
So what? Yeah, never mind.
Uh, yes.
That's crazy. That's crazy. We all have to redo all of the episodes.
I should say, the, the, that legislation itself, well, didn't, didn't necessarily specify, um. Uh, driver's license, uh, that's what the application ended up being, but in the legislation of the, they just. The legislatures attempt to define genders, uh, and then essentially construct all, like, executive agencies to, um, you know, implement that. And so really where that ended up applying to was for most part the driver's licenses.
Well, since we don't do those anymore. Here in the county.
No, we do not.
Well, that would be the statute to do that, it wouldn't matter if we were doing it or. You'd have to follow all the state statute, whatever, whatever it is. Yeah.
And so I can't remember, I think, issue with. For statute, I didn't live in the case, but that issue was, um. It can be addressed with just a couple of words. Change, I remember, you know, that law initially was getting pushed out, it just didn't seem that had a big weight to it. Um, it didn't have much purpose behind it, so. The legislature is likely, that's, again, since they're gonna go to this special session, potentially, I, um, that's what they'll likely try to address there. Yeah, I. Darnell's, uh, art, for sure. Maybe. Whatever. One of the big games this weekend. Chief You have a funny little she stills. Yeah, that's not good. It's good use of
Yeah, I think it's the it's the second stat. You know, it's it's
Well, recently, uh wasn't she excited? They did the semi half last game. Yeah, a person like Washington played incredibly well. Uh I don't know who they were just. Like, I don't know. It's kind of terrible. And do it. Yeah, you know, the vents. Oh, yeah. I have a spell see I agree here, but a lot of them has they would have had happened. And that's us to see. That tells me I rise to that place in most everything. Who is that? He should sooner he starts. Is a drop off on the air, they drop it off now. Yeah, I heard. A bottle of share.
It's interesting that you're talking about the north central foothills.
Yeah.
I did my master's report on that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the framework implementation. Say implementation day. Yeah, and how the counties came together for that federal mandate to remove women and children from the lots.
Yeah. Interesting.
First time I heard about something like that for a long time. I thought uh something happened and that disbanded and it was just your count. Then it was like still going strong, good.
Yeah.
And a lot of voice.
Are we ready?
There's Bob.
Morning, Commissioner Bob Isaac. Um on behalf of North uh North County Real Estate LLC, Randy Taylor has made applications Riley County Planning and Development requesting approved to replat lots eighty eight, eighty nine, ninety, ninety one, ninety two, and ninety three of block ten of Lakeside Heights. The two point two acre subject site is generally located approximately thirteen hundred and twenty two feet south and east of Danadel Drive on the south side of Lakeside Drive, all in Shremington. Uh the subject's property was originally platted as lots eighty eight, eighty nine, ninety, ninety one, ninety two, and ninety three, block ten of Lakeside Heights subdivision in June of nineteen sixty two. A building permit was issued June nineteen seventy one for the residence occupying the site shown here. Um the applicant removed the existing residence and ordered to build a new residence on the same foundation using the same footprint. However, it was discovered replacing the existing septic system required replating the aforementioned lots together into a single lot in order to eliminate the property lines and associated setbacks required by the sanitary code. Uh combining the aforementioned lots together will also result in meeting the sanitary code's area requirement for a lot served by onsite septic systems and well. Septic property is in its entirety, it's a SF three single feminine residential. Uh there are no conditional uses or special uses associated with the site. On October twentieth of this year, the Riley County Board of Zoning Appeals approved a variance to reduce the front yard setback from twenty five feet seventeen. If how many? Riley County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site. The nearest county fire station is the University Park Fire Station, currently located at seventy four twelve Redwood, uh in University Park. And this is the final plat showing the new boundary and the lot lines to be vacated with the plat. The easements shown in gray will remain uh as there's no reason to request vacating them at this time. Uh the replat became necessary in the course of events to improve the property. The applicant, the applicant removed the existing residence in order to build a new residence on the same foundation. However, replacing the existing set system required engineering of the area where the system needed to go, uh which involved crossing a property lawn. Um replating the property lines or aforementioned lots together into a single lot will eliminate aforementioned lots together into a point. Uh couple pics of the property. Uh this is the incomplete rebuild of the cabin. Notice the foundation washout basement is built into the hillside. Uh standing east of the home looking west, this is a better view of the distance from the road and the front porch. This also illustrates the very limited buildable area of the subject property. Also, a new power pole was installed recently. Similar location and perspective, this shows the location of the home relative to Lakeside Drive. Also shows the rear of the home and the terracing and retaining wall for back patio. This is more of a close up shot of the east elevation to the home. And walking around to the rear of the home, the terracing for the back patio is evident and necessary. In this flat area here, uh just lower uh low, the side of the retaining wall is wrapping around the home and that's where the septic system is located. Again, and that's necessary. And turning to my left, I was hoping to kind of capture the extreme drop off that exists uh along the On October twentieth, the Riley County Planning Board approved the final plat of Lakeside Heights Unit Eight, as it was found to meet the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the Riley County Sanitary Code. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners acknowledge the approved final plat of Lakeside Heights Unit Eight, accepting any ease of easel lifts, rights of way or licenses that shown to be dedicated on the final plat. It's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to field those first.
Do you go back to that slide that shows back? I was wondering, yeah, where's the septic tank and where did the where did the lateral fields?
It's literally right around the bend of this. Uh huh. And that's it. It was crossing uh lot lines going to the west. And uh our sanitary code doesn't allow that. Even though it was a replacement system, he felt it was just best to take care of things and he owned it all anyway and brought it all together. Uh the he made a mistake by uh not getting a building permit. And the problem is the original uh building uh had a building permit. But when someone came along and built on the front porch, they didn't get a building permit for that, and that was in the building setback. And he did not know that and and it was there for decades like that. No incidences or anything, but uh when he came in, he thought he could just replace in place. And discovered he was in the front yard setback requiring the vareness.
Okay.
So. Again, if he would have got a building permit for it, he would have known. So.
Okay. Well, that's quite a steep drop off.
It is. It's a very limited area for building.
I was wondering why the house was so small and then you see that.
Yeah, and going up here. You can see where the the house is in relation to the rest of the property. And even halfway through the house is already dropping off. And right behind the house is where the septic system, they had, they had to bring in some dirt and level that out and make it happen. They had engineers.
What happened? We had to move it.
Good question.
Yes.
I hope you didn't have to. Maybe further over, I guess. On that same edge.
Or pipe out the
You're right. That doesn't, there's the old fashioned way. We'll get it to the lake.
I shouldn't even say that.
And you can kind of see in these pictures how the the top of the tree line is sitting there. It's 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 a tremendous drop off there.
Yeah. A good viewing.
It is great view, totally. But that's all I have. If you have guys have any questions, I mean, we have a mile off for you to sign as well.
To approve resolution one zero three zero two five, acknowledging the approved final plat of Lakeside Heights Unit Eight and accepting easements right away licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat.
I would second that.
And moved it second to prove res- resolution one zero three zero two five, acknowledging the approved final plat of Lakeside Heights Unit Eight, accepting easements right aways or licenses shown uh to be dedicated on the final plat. All favor.
Aye. All fairly signed. Yeah.
We're sending you a bill later.
And like until people come across say hallway with lines and pay, they will say tax, they say you take it, they say yes to cash.
Does it look like I need candy?
How do you answer that, Bob? Yeah, well, there's any uh Yeah. Something going on on the ball. Uh we'll be Yeah. genuine, so we'll be able to learn if anyone will be able to talk about places. That's
I don't, we thought we would be, but the neighbors said it doesn't get that much in our area. I figured on state hill we'd be getting, because we never, the only time where we are now, we get maybe two sets of suits and jam head, two or three, and that's the only people we get. But I think they can just Yeah, there's there's some case, so and then I just have to take care of it.
All of our kids are going over there and my wife and Sam's are buying four two bags of candy, and my daughter said that's still not moving yet. Oh, good. Because we were there last year and this, and you see, you know, people a lot of people from different parts of town, they were stationed, they're out of Well, I'm glad they still think so. Literally, uh like a fable of the past enough. The people in downtown did the
Rest groups did one. I said Jacob. Department, he does the other day and he had the whole basket shopping box full of candy. Well, I bought a bunch of candy for the kids for him that he loves. But it's My daughter goes into the cashier and got my favorites. Still got beautiful.
They can now.
Hmm.
It's crazy.
Yeah. Uh Jamaica looks like a friendly dist cornfield, right?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I heard the decimated town of Elizabeth. This dawn and industrial district where a lot of people worked, I mean, for and after we see.
I mean
Not, yeah, it is.
Surge was something like twenty six, twenty eight feet. Yeah, yeah, that was a surge. Hit thirty inches of rain.
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's it's terrible. I've been there twice and beautiful country and things, beautiful scenery, of course, oceans and beaches are in, but I just can't imagine.
Yeah, it's
That takes so much of that is built right out to the water's edge and the beaches and uh yeah.
So move at the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Boating, Commissioner Ford, Jacob Hanson, County Counselor, and Michael Hall Thurn, Assistant County Counselor, recessed into executive session resume to the attorney client consultation exception in Kansas Open Meetings Act regarding confidential legal advice on pending litigation. May open meeting to review in the commission chamber at nine fifty five, nine fifty five.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded from the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously previously stated under the attorney client consultation exception against the meeting. All favor. for reasons previously stated under the attorney client consultation exception, there's Kansas Open Meeting, all in favor of that. for reasons previously stated under the attorney client consultation exception, there's Kansas Open Meeting, all in favor of that. for reasons previously stated under the attorney client consultation exception, there's Kansas Open Meeting, all in favor of that.
Right. Right. Right.
Good.
Hey, you are live again.
Okay, I will move the board of county commissioners to the executive session.
I would second that.
And move in second for county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor.
Aye.
I also move the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the census reach today's session.
I would second that.
To move to second record reflect action shall be taken consistent with census reach and executive session, all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we'll make a motion that's every recess board of final motion convene as the board of county health.
I would second that.
New consecutive recess is more than any commission.
Good morning, Caitlin Smith, WIC supervisor.
And Diane Prey, Health Director.
Um, I don't have a lot to update you on from Monday.
Wanted to mention that I've noticed it on every single week.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need a specific meeting update unless there's something that we need to decide on or there's some serious movement one way or the other. I just I don't.
I think we had anticipated that more would happen.
Okay.
Um, but for November, we can definitely.
Okay, just kind of on the plot there if you need to, but kind of a, I don't want to say wasted time, but I.
Yeah.
There's other things that have been done, yes.
Um, so we have not received our allocation amount for November yet, so probably by tomorrow. Um, Katie, she does meet today with local agencies at noon, so hopefully we'll have some more, more from them. Um, I think most of this week has just been working with community partners like the breadbasket um, to see what the need is going to be and and how we can help address that, so. Um, and WA, it National WIC Association uh, met on on Tuesday, so they just provided a higher level overview. Um, USDA is starting to do more reallocation requests for WIC, and so we're hoping to see some additional money funnel through. Yeah.
There's no movement in Capitol Hill, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna stretch on for a while, so.
So unless we have what would be your guidance for coming back?
They may not know anything until this needs get printed out.
Yeah.
Set up a day or two ahead of time, you know, no day to day.
Uh huh.
You know, I mean, I know it isn't, but only you only have five minutes that could something. Hopefully, well, you know, you don't know day to day.
Right, I think it's gonna be a couple of weeks at least.
Well, I know with, yeah, but they've, state's been making some adjustments, trying to juggle things.
Well, it depends on how many complaints they're getting.
Yeah.
National level. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Oh, uh, I'm gonna make a motion and then it's every recess is the board of county health and then we convene is the board of county commission.
I would second that.
The move to second is recess of the board of health and reconvene as board of county commission, favor.
Aye.
Yes, one minute.
Another long minute.
Spread of the game is like seventy and a half or something.
Yeah, that's last I heard.
Yeah, I saw that online last night. Not for us, it's just family.
I know, it's.
That was favorite.
Seven and a half, seven, so we're kind of moving back and forth.
Uh, good morning, Commissioner Corey Meyer, uh, ITGIS director here for staff update. Um. Lot to say, so I'll probably talk quick. Uh, first and foremost, uh, it's an exciting day because I'm fully staffed, so.
Same, didn't you?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, they're they're all threatened now. Uh. Uh, I have been staffed, but when Riley, uh, Payne, our new uh, uh, IT tech started, the day he started, then Chris left for his honeymoon, and so then Chris got back yesterday, so, uh, yeah. Yeah, get one in, one go out, but hey, we're all there now, and uh, so that's, that's really exciting. Um, really pleased with Riley so far and the work he's done in the short few weeks, and he's settling in well, and uh, personalities are all jiving and getting along well, which is a super important for for us, a team of our size, so that's uh, that's my most exciting thing. Uh, but a little bit about what's been going on, um, moving past the regulars. Uh, the window project, we're down to the last apartment, which is the counselor's office. Um, I see that they still have some paint and repair to finish up, but actually all the windows are in and done, sealed and so forth. Um, so, but unfortunately, next week being election week, you're probably going to be the week after that when you get to go home. So, um, yeah, yeah, um, but uh, it it looks good, all the windows are looking good in there, and um. The elevator project, uh, we're involved with that, uh, health department, court, and uh, at uh, at Carnegie. Um, health department and courts are both in progress. Carnegie will be starting next week. Our part in that is 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 the networking to the elevator and so forth, the communication that they have at the monitoring station, and um, and then helping through the assistance of um, what will be background checks and those kind of things uh, with with the staff that are working there. Um, the EMS building, we've had just some continued little things as they settle in. I know they've been there a little bit, but making some adjustments and and working those things through. Um, got TV service there, we're still tweaking the conference room, even though it's working out well, some of the doors and so forth. The EM remodel, as you guys all can see, that it's going on well over there, getting those calls of their interesting findings, like a mysterious four inch pipe yesterday. Um, I hope they figured out what that was, and uh, and then just the plans, layouts, the ongoing meetings that several of you are involved with um, in that area. Uh, the remodel downtown, all costs and pricing have come in now at this point. I know that John probably have an update on that, but so far, everything looks to be under the approved C I C C I P amount. Um, and so we should be ready to move forward with that project um, downtown. Uh, our remodel, as you approved uh, last week or week before, uh, to move forward on that, we've got some drawings and so forth we put together, so. Remodeling CPE, the old EM area, that will be moving forward uh, as we get settled on how to lay out the space, and then get pricing costs and so forth, so um, a lot of the consideration in that is where we place the server room, so we're evaluating where the water pipes are, where the bathroom is up above, where previous leaks have happened and so forth, and so uh, there's a lot of uh, Lego pieces to put in the right place when when it comes to that over there, but that's exciting. We're all excited for it, and we appreciate the commission uh, continuing to move forward with, you know, the strategic plan and everything that we're doing. That's another one of the dominoes that was on there, and so we are greatly appreciative of that, and it's exciting for that when they get and what's next and as we go along, so these are exciting times. Um. We'll be wrapping up the migration of our fax lines out of our old uh Plexar system, so this is all part of the big uh, move that we did from our phone system over to WebEx, where we've now discontinued one particular service that was in the three thousand dollars a month. Now we're ready to start to cut off another two bills that were fifteen hundred dollars a month, and so as I've presented and talked about several times, as we're made this move that we will save upwards of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year in this transition on funds. Uh, whether you've liked it or not, whether it's been painful or graceful, um, you know, uh, IT uh, likes to ruffle the feathers, then we'll smooth the feathers, and then we look good all over again, right? So, yeah. Um, so yes, we did complete the phone system upgrade in September, moving across, finishing, tweaking, making changes as we gotta go. We discontinued the Plexar. Uh, the EMR uh, for the health department, um, I'll be in presenting that contract to get final approval on that, but uh, the the banter back and forth between legals got settled and all looks well, so we'll be ready to push that forward, so. Um, appreciate Jacob's involvement there and those things and getting that taken care of. It's inventory time. Uh, all departments have got to begin to do their inventory, and for us in IT, it's extensive because of all the devices and products, everything, everything's got a tag on it somewhere. Uh, so uh, we will be very busy starting that November one is when we can get started with that, and so after elections, we'll 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 move forward with that quickly. Uh, did some monitor upgrades, WIC, attorney. Uh, our laptop rotation was completed, our desktop rotation was completed, still evaluating public works for a conference room upgrade. Uh, we have been uh, got proposals and going through with courts uh, to evaluate their large courtrooms and upgrade their audio, video in there. Transfer station is gonna get a video uplift uh, next week on Wednesday and Thursday. We'll move them from two cameras to ten cameras out there, make sure that we have coverage. Um, we've had several extracurricular events and activities take place, and also we want to make sure that there's coverage up there for liability reasons. There was recently some material taken by a large purple entity out there that um, caused a bit of a scare, so we had to work through that and so forth, but uh, yeah, not naming names, but describing well. Um, security is always top of our list, of course, anything and everything related to. Um, we recently uh, have blocked in the last two weeks, unfortunately. Um, I feel bad for attorneys' offices, but they are under siege. We are at nine different attorneys or law offices that we know of in the regional area that have had some sort of compromise. And I really feel bad for them. I know that it creates difficulty for courts and for them, but every email that comes in, we hold, we vet, we verify that it's legit, and then we release it out, um, so. Um, but we stay on top of those, we set up notifications for ourselves when those come in, so we can get to them right away. Um. The uh, CGS audit took a long time. It's actually still, we completed it on our part and had our meeting, but the state has not completed it on there, and we checked in on it, and they said, oh, yeah, whoops, we're behind. Gee, thanks. I mean, we're six months past, but anyway, that's the state level up there. Um, we're moving forward with the appraiser, the replacement of our parcel and tax search. Um, going well, it's in beta as far as for us to look at, review functionality and so forth, is the data going in right? That was a previous one you approved to replace the company that we're using called Almentum that has really gotten outdated. Um, this has a lot more functionality and ability for especially the public to use in doing research and so forth, properties and findings, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, we had a few uh, short notice um, incidents that took place, or uh, one in particular, um, RCPD. Some knew of the outage they were gonna have and some didn't, and so we were called on to figure out how to help them, but on the ninth, they had a scheduled power outage of the building that some didn't know of in particular. Um, dispatch was was one, and they called on us to, how can we help? So we mobilized the command post and took it downtown, and the switch to our WebEx phone system allowed us to fire up phones inside of the command bus. They forwarded lines out to our phone system, and then they were able to operate and handle nine one one administrative calls out of the command bus during that power outage. Um, it was necessary for troubles that they were having, but um, it's, it just wasn't well managed, but everybody got through it. It was actually a a great test, if you will, for if there was ever a bigger true unscheduled incident of what our two entities could do in working together, so honestly, it was a great, it was a good thing. It really allowed us to know how we could work together uh, in in those kind of situations, so we were real happy. Uh, Tyler Sifke's, the communications manager down there, was just absolutely pleased with how it went, so it was, it was a good, it was a good thing.
Making lemonade out of it.
We did. We squeezed them quick too. Yeah, we squeezed them quick, yeah. Uh, employee day, uh, what a wonderful day, right? So thank you to everybody involved. It was a good day. It was fun. It was fun, and I mean that, actually. It was a good day. It was a lot of fun. Um, good presentations. We got some sound system work to do there. Uh, we acknowledge that. It just, it just wasn't right, so we're going to be looking at that and what we can do different there, but um. Uh, figure out how we can handle the mics different and so forth, but went off well, appreciative to AMC letting us use that, that works out well and so forth in there. Uh, the WIC move, you've you've been told, uh, I'm sure, but that was a short notice, uh, got notified on a Thursday, they had to be out by the next Tuesday. So we pulled off getting the internet installed on the Monday uh, and tested, and then we went out on Tuesday, the twenty first, which was the D day. And uh, due to the shutdown, we did not have access to any of their network areas where we could have used existing cabling, so we had to run cabling firewall, we had to do everything, building them from the ground up, including getting all their computers. And uh, three of us went out there and we accomplished it all in in one day. Uh, by the time we left at four o'clock, they were fully operational with computers, phones, so we had to run all the network lines and and do everything, and so. Uh, really proud of my team and how we come together. It was a little nerve wracking because it took us a a long time to actually get our clearance to get on base. The system was down for two days, and so we didn't even know if we would be able to get on. Um, we actually had some that it didn't get approved, um, because it just wasn't up, and so the whole weekend, we were all trying to get our clearance to get on, so that part was the most nerve nerve wracking of the whole thing, so whether we'd be able to get there or not, but we did, and it and it worked out well, so. Uh, next week, uh, all staff, other than myself, um, now, uh, I will, I'll be helping with opening and closing on Tuesday, but I'll be in office on Monday, Wednesday, but the rest of the ITGIS staff will be out supporting elections, getting them up and uh, and going, uh, as we always do. Uh, it's fun time. Um, we like change of pace and getting out and doing that. Um, so Riley's been thrown to the, thrown to the wolves here, thrown into the fire, doing well, but he's been over and through the training, the election staff does a great job, and he's ready to go, so that's, uh, we're looking forward to that. Um, quite some time ago, so long ago that John and I actually forgot about it, the WTC had gotten a grant to be putting in internet in public locations, and then lo and behold, two weeks ago, we got a, hey, we're ready to go and put internet at Fairmont Park, so. Uh, shit, right, uh, John and I both took a little bit to try to think, what was that? What was that about? But uh, in the next two weeks, we will be assisting uh, WTC to put the internet, wireless internet out of Fairmont Park, uh, Fairmont Park. You know, across the river out there, football fields, dog park areas. Um, that uh, public internet will be on a timer. It's not like it's going to be available twenty four hours a day, so it will have a time period of when probably somewhere nine to nine or ten o'clock at night, it's off, so they're not sitting there overnight and so forth. Now, it doesn't do anything, it's not a part of our network as far as Riley County goes, what we're doing there is providing location and power. That's our part to that, is location and power, and they put everything else in, and uh, but there will be uh, public internet available out there. Um, by the end of November, you know, we'll be up and done and working, so.
We're gonna be five, five around the game.
They have the ability to shoot that signal over there wirelessly and then bounce it around the building, so they're to the uh, back towards the river and towards the west side, there's the the bigger gazebo, they'll be there, and then when you go up by the dog park uh, across those football fields, they'll be there, so they'll have a ring that's uh, all the way around there, but they'll be providing it, uh, doing it that way, so. Uh, in GIS, uh, they're going through, uh, we had some vendors that we replaced, and uh, so they're going through training and new orientation with a couple of vendors, uh, on some products that we use. Um, so they're busy uh, getting acquainted with with new vendors, uh, as far as the appraiser and the tax search, uh, that product. Um, they'll be using uh, RGIS uh, to render maps and do searches and so forth, so they've been involved in getting that going. Um, the uh, uh, we have a section type project that uh, they're getting ready to go out and do surveys for us in areas that uh, we don't have very good lines on. They're gonna be working around the lake and so forth, and and that's an annual uh, project that we're gonna do, that was a previously approved one, but they wanted to wait, and so they got leaf off, which would help them uh, when they shoot uh, between their devices and so forth and what they're doing, so every year, we're gonna continue to go out, have more section ties uh, marked officially surveyed that way, when they go in then and updating in our maps, you know, uh, our lines are accurate. Um, that'll also help us with right of ways and so forth, uh, when it comes to areas, and and so we'll be having some of those done. Um, they got their new ticketing system finalized, so if you're a employee of the county and you're having problems, there's a link that you go to and put in a ticket there. Um, and then um, a big project, it took Jake a lot of time. Um, RCPD abruptly decided to stop working with a vendor that they had, it's called GeoCom, and the purpose of that vendor was to take data from the maps, the county and so forth, and then make it available in the Spillman, which is one of their dispatch applications, and when they abruptly stopped that, now they didn't have accurate data in the Spillman, and so uh, Jacob spent days um, and weeks and back and forth working with Tyler down there at PD and went in and wrote processes and everything, so we are directly providing the data for the county now out of RGIS to their Spillman application, and we created, so there's no bridge in between anymore. It's extensive. Um, kudos to Jacob for all the work that he did. Um, but he was uh, he was locked in for quite a while on that project, and Tyler is extremely happy down there because they actually get data in a better better format, and it's doing better for them than what they had before, but uh, again, you know, for us, there there are we're all providers of of the citizens of Riley County, so we're happy to step in and be able to do that and and have that there, but uh, and then he actually was able to fully automate that as well, once he got done and understood how the data needed to be. It's fully automated, so it's hands off on that, so again, as I have always done and will continue to do, GIS staff is they're so good, they are so good, I, really, really good, I don't as as well as my IT staff, so I I am blessed to have uh, good employees that I work with, and and that helps a lot in everything we can accomplish, so. Um, on that note, if there's any questions or anything from the mission, I'd be more than happy to answer. All right, well, thank you all, and enjoy the fall weather.
Hmm hmm, yeah.
Go that way to the exact minute to start, and then I'll just. I'll be getting something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Easy to do coming down this hill.
Um, Commissioner Elizabeth Ward is the resources director and I'm here today really to transition to David Umanzar, who is the outreach coordinator for M A T C. Um, I mentioned in my last staff update that Commissioner Board had asked HR to look into the potential for a registered apprenticeship, which is a state run, uh, program for apprentices to come into the workforce and the potential partnership with M A T C. Uh, but after talking with David and he speaking with, you know, the, the, I can't, did you speak to the direct director? I don't know. I mean, you guys together looked at our job descriptions. They actually proposed a different route to potentially achieve our goals. Um, so I'm going to have him talk about um, a regional certification program for some of our jobs and the concept of it. And we can see if that's something you all would like us to, to move forward and work on.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is David Umanzar. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm with, uh, Manhattan Tech. Uh, by the way, Elizabeth has been incredibly professional. She's been great at figuring out solutions for the county. And so just a little shout out there. Um, one of the things that, uh, we were working on, uh, when we were having these conversations is, is really figuring out what the problem really is. And so when we have conversations, it's uh, really the county seeing vacancies and, you know, several positions that are lasting a year or more. Uh, but really especially those related to, uh, some of the, uh, public works, uh, some of the, uh, more general maintenance positions, um. Really, when we get down to, to brass tacks, brass tacks on that, it, it comes down to, to one big problem. And that's, uh, over and under skilled, uh, under skilled labor. Um, and so the, the, the thing is that most of the people coming out of our programs, uh, they're HVAC professionals, they're plumbing professionals, electrical professionals here, starting in the fall. Uh, we're getting carpenters and we're getting, um, and we're getting all these, these great specialized workforce out. Uh, but they can make a whole lot more if they stay specialized than if they do something more general. Uh, so when you try to attract that workforce, they're usually not going to stay long or they're not going to apply. But when you're attracting everybody else, usually it's, they don't have the skills necessary to fill those roles. And so what happens is those roles ends up staying, staying open for a year, two years at a time and, and, uh, and, and ultimately it costs, it costs some money. And so it's estimated that it could cost, uh, employers in general about seventy, seventy two thousand dollars a year to eighty nine thousand dollars a year, which is much more than what an actual employee would, would get paid for that position. And that's coming from outsourcing work. That's coming from, uh, you know, inefficiencies and what, whatnot. And so for us, it is, uh, it is really important on us when we're work, working in workforce development that we find those solutions for that. And so uh, what we have put together is, is an idea for putting together a regional credential. I mean by that is, uh, there's not a national certification for, uh, general maintenance, uh, or something that's as general as what you need for your, for your roles. Uh, and so what we can put together is a regional credential that's the, the education we could, it's put, put together by us. But it's also, uh, assessed. So really it's, it's all about the skill verification. And so the idea is, and that's where, that's really where, um, the, the best part of it lies, uh, is, is in that skill verification. So that way, when you have people going through the program, we can verify that they know how to do some light carpentry. They know how to do some light electrical work. They know how to do some light plumbing. They know how to do some light HVAC work and they know when they've reached their max and when they need to outsource something, uh, that's more specialized. And so uh, what we're, what we're proposing is a, uh, is for Riley County to, to participate in a, an employer consortium. Uh, we're looking at limiting that to six employers because Riley County is not the only employer that's seen this problem. Uh, there's actually several others who have seen this problem as well. So we would limit that to six employers, uh, and we would put together uh, this, this group to design the actual program to figure out what exactly are they going to learn? Why, how important is some carpentry skills over some plumbing skills or what have you? So that would, that would be the uh, course of the conversation and we would work on designing the curriculum. We would go out and recruit employees for you. Uh, and then we would train them up and get them certified so that they can actually be, you know, they can start working for the county and, and be effective. Uh, and so it's very similar to a, uh, an apprenticeship program, only without a lot of the paperwork. Uh, to, to, on our end. And so, uh, and on, on anybody's end. And so for us, it is, uh, getting you that skilled labor at the end of the day. And so um, right now, I know part of our ask today is, is can we move forward with having this conversation and putting something, something together on paper that we can come back and evaluate, uh, at another, at a future meeting. Uh, and, uh, but that, that's, that's it in a nutshell. And I'm, I'm open to any questions you have.
And David did include his, uh, he put together. Oh, I'm scared. He put together a flyer. I guess I don't know how to.
Yeah, proposal, yeah.
Yeah, it was just basically a sketch and outline of how the proposal would work. Um, and this particular proposal is based on our, our general maintenance. We could apply it potentially to like the operators. Um, some of those others, uh, so those are jobs that don't take a degree, but they also need some knowledge on hands-on skills. Um, so I have very briefly discussed this with John and Alvin. Um, you know, that's going to be probably the main focus on some of those things. Uh, but you guys might recall the last time that we tried to fill the building, building maintenance tech position. It was open for a very extended period of time. Uh, we currently only have two building and facility positions and one of those people has like created the position and been in that position for a very long time. Um, and just trying to hire the tech over the last couple of years, we, we think hiring that's been supervisor level is going to be even more difficult. And I don't know if, if it, if you're interested, but the reason that we are kind of shying away from the registered apprentice program is because being a state program, there are a lot of requirements that are not necessarily about the skill and the job. Um, a lot of tracking, a lot of curriculum maintenance, a lot of reporting, um, that you, you, you're much more familiar with, but.
And, and the other part of that is there's a lot less flexibility. And so usually with these, uh, with registered apprenticeships, they have their educational outline of what they have to reach. Well, how many hours of work they have to, to reach to be able to accomplish, to, to move on to the next step of this apprenticeship? Uh, and so there's not as much flexibility for Riley County to say, well, we really need someone that's trained in these competencies. Uh, for example, uh, what's relevant, I think, to, to some of these operator positions is, uh, knowing how to work with cement and asphalt. Um, that's something that generally is not going to be covered by someone who's just doing general maintenance and focusing more closer to carpentry or some of those, uh, internal facilities. But when Riley County's at the table, we can make it a little bit more flexible. So that way you can fill both positions and they've got a good, you know, they get some knowledge in both, in both areas. That's a flexibility you don't typically get with, with registered apprenticeships. And then the tracking and the reporting, uh, ends up becoming a whole other, uh, a whole other part of the project that we don't have to do as much on. And at the end of the day, you don't get the skills verification. Uh, and that's, that's the, the biggest piece. You, apprenticeship says you've done some work for some time and you've done some classes for some time. Uh, and when we talk about a regional credential, we're talking about putting together and, and, and assessment that would verify whether or not they actually have the skills that we're training them in.
Yeah, I had a question. Well, I may be jumping up. So we would hire a person and then send them to the tech center for, for classes or tech training or you know, you refer to that person as hiring a learner, but I don't know what a learner is.
Yeah.
That's a student or it's a trainee, apparently all being apprentice, but.
Yeah, so.
I, I'm just a.
Yeah. No, great question. And I think, uh, when we look at this timeline, it helps, uh, clear some of that up. So for us, just to define what a learner is, for us, is anybody who's getting any kind of education. So for us, it's whether that's on a for credit side, which this program is not, uh, for credit, academic credit, you know, that, that's any program that you do right currently at Manhattan Tech. Uh, you can get leveraged student loans for, and you can get academic credit for it. And that's not what we're talking about today. And what we're talking about is something that's not for credit. And so when we talked about, we'll talk about a learner, we're talking about someone who's getting the education piece. But they, they really don't need the academic credit for it. Uh, and so what a timeline would look like is we would start, uh, tentatively here in November, uh, early part of December ideally, uh, at, at the, at the latest. Uh, but from November to February, we would, we would develop a curriculum. We would be meeting, uh, two to three times with whoever is assigned to meet with us. Uh, and so we would have that to figure out what it is that the prior, what are the priorities for Riley County? Uh, while we develop this curriculum, um, in January, we, we begin recruitment plans. And so what we would be doing is we would be picking up the recruitment the part of the job for you. And so instead of having, uh, you know, Elizabeth and, and your professionals having to spend all their time doing recruiting for these positions, we'll actually be putting out recruiting for you, uh, and recruiting to fill those, those seats. Um, and then what we would do is, uh, when we, when we execute that recruiting, that'll be February through March, and then we would ideally start by April or May. Uh, is when we begin to, to, to start and deliver the, the program. Uh, and so our goal is that by the end of May, you would have, uh, two, when we say hiring two learners, we're talking about, we would love to have a work and learn program. Uh, but that's up to how y'all decide to, to design it with us. Uh, but ideally they would be able to start working for Riley County while they're going through this program, applying the, the lessons that they're learning. And then by the end of May, you'll have, you'll have a workforce ready to start tackling the projects you have for the summer.
So Catherine, in my, in my terms as employer, I think we would consider this person a trainee. So similar to the program that we do with the CDL, you know, we have the employees and we train them in CDL. I think, I mean, all of this is kind of a proposal. So we would, we would want to, in my mind, we want to get Alvin at the table if that's who John assigns. Um, and, and really fi- figure out how that works best for Riley County. Um, we would have input. We would not be required to hire someone that M A T C says this is a good fit. They're going to be recruiting people who want these kinds of jobs, but you know, we're still going to have the supervisor and Alvin making those decisions. And we would hire a trainee that would then, we'd say whatever skills that Alvin and John, uh, say are, you know, these are the non-negotiables, these is what they have to be able to do. We're going to negotiate to get that on the curriculum and they're going to go in and hands on. And I think something's important for, for me is I've spent some time in their training center. And that I don't want you guys to think about a classroom. I want you to think about literally lab work in carp, like they're literally doing carpenter work. They're literally doing HVAC work. And so it, it can really be designed for what we have in place, obviously in consideration of the other five employers. Um, but that's, yeah.
So do we develop a new job description for, for this person, but it's recruited there? I mean, I'm just not quite.
I, I don't think we would. We, we might have to tweak something. I think our, our goal as the employer is to find employees who can do the skills that we need, that we, yeah.
Training basically.
Yeah, it's not about creating new jobs. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it might in the, you know, for example, the building maintenance position is something John's had on his to-do list to update for a while. So we might have that opportunity, but it's going to be identified by John and Alvin and the supervisor in whichever area. So if it's operators, you know, if it's rod and bridge, if it's cement, whatever.
And I would also encourage you that if, if, uh, for whoever that gets assigned to, if they have that job description in mind and they know these are the skills and these are the qualifications we need for these positions to be successful, you bring that to the table when we're, you know, whoever that is brings that to the table to uh, outline that in the curriculum and saying, okay, well, we really want somebody, we, we don't need as much in the electrical side as much as we need somebody who knows how to do a lot more plumbing, because those are the issues we're facing. Uh, and, uh, and so we would love for us to focus more on that and on cement work. Uh, and that, that's the, that's the perspective they bring to the table based on the job descriptions that, that you already have in place.
This isn't just for Riley County, this program, because there's other employers. Like I said, those type of people, I think there are places that are needed. And because I didn't want somebody to go through there, we're not guaranteeing somebody's a job after that. We're just saying we'd like to, you know, if we do need to have an opening, this place we'd love for.
Yeah. So I think it's really important that we know it's not just for Riley County. Cause as I've told David, we don't have, we don't have an unlimited number of jobs and we don't have an unlimited number of openings. But it depends how we did, end up design, designing it. One of the options that David floated is like, we literally hire the person with the training requirement, like saying you're, you're, we're going to hire you for this job, like we do with the operators who need a CDL. We hire you and we have the training as part of that expectation. Or they start the program and we decide who we'd like to interview and hire out of that. We, that, those are the things that we have to hash out of how we want to bring our perspective to the table, but it can't be just for us because we don't have enough jobs.
Set a program for us to, our.
Right. Right. And it's got to be on those critical jobs.
K-State.
Yes. Well, and if we're talking about general maintenance, you know, there, there's, everybody has general maintenance, you know, all the big corporations, Walmart is going to have it. I mean, anybody you can think of. Yeah, Florence. Yeah, exactly. So like in those aspects, yeah, kind of the, the road crew is going to be a little different, but there are people who do aspects of what we do in the road crew. So that's all got to be hashed out if you're supportive of it. And, you know, I know, hopefully you did see on there that if we decide to move forward, there will be some sort of a cost, our share of that. Um, David has kind of quoted that at five thousand, but again, we haven't sat down with all of the employers. So just kind of giving you an idea that there will be something associated.
I think it's good. Yeah, it sounds like a good, good idea.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say everybody needs those.
Yeah.
That for people to just keep things running.
Yeah. Well, and that's what we've talked about in all of our employer circles is that we've got, he said, well, we either got over skilled or under skilled applicants. So how do we bridge that? Let's, let's figure out what skills they need and try to get a program for them. Um, of course we won't sign anything. In the end, there'll be an MOU or a contract. I think you guys call it a service. Um.
Yeah, you know, the training, uh, agreement.
Yeah. Yeah. So nothing would actually be in place until we have that approved and reviewed by legal and then signed by you all. Um, but basically wanted to make sure you were good with us moving forward and making some potential, um, partnerships there.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, my intention is that I would be a part of it and that, um, depending on who John wants to assign, the public works would take the lead on the skills. If that seems appropriate.
This is something each of these other employers, but their way is going to be a little bit different. But try to get, get it organized so it covers everybody's.
Yeah. Yeah. We might have some of the less essential, the secondary, um, tasks that we aren't covering, but as long as we're getting our main essential duties covered.
And, and that's part of the reason, I will say, I, I, part of the reason I'm limiting it to six employers is for that. Uh, because if I, you know, I could say, well, let's invite twenty employers, because I'm, there's twenty employers that need them. Uh, but we're not going to accommodate anybody's true needs if we're, if we're filling the, the room too much. But, uh, but if, I think six is where really where we can uh, make it more manageable, uh, to share the costs, but then also get really specific about what your needs are for your workforce.
Yeah.
So the board agreed you buy in the census despite the middle of the regional certification code?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you're going to bring back something.
Yeah.
There's a good news or saying, just saying, keep going.
Yeah, you're just saying, keep going. Right. And so then we'll bring back with you. Once that's developed, we're going to say, okay, here's what we have come to as an agreement. Here's the skills and they will learn. Probably a little bit, see if the timeline is still accurate and that kind of stuff. All right. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thanks for coming, David. Appreciate it.
I don't think there's anybody behind me, right? So.
That's right.
Obviously I already mentioned a page on, uh, walls next week. Uh, do you guys still have the administrative, uh, work sessions in place? Um, I'm, I'm sure happy to get up here and speak for you guys or if you guys do. That's it. Sorry. Just. Um, if you have something that's something to get with that.
As of right now, I don't think so.
So we'll, we'll gauge that a little bit more later. So then we'll say.
Just let, you know, be unnecessary.
And then just be sure and let Michael know if something comes up, they can get it on there too for, you know, sometimes things come up we don't anticipate.
Yeah.
Well, I'm anticipating next week, right?
You're going to be gone for a full week, starting Monday.
Well, I don't have anything else.
Does score, John? Uh, Michael, take good notes because you're, well, no, we have a bye week next week. So you don't have to, but it'd still be good to take good notes on this problem. John, you have score?
I'm gonna go thirty one, twenty seven, K-State.
What else do me?
Well, go ahead, Jerry.
That's what I had. Exactly. You know, this is right that you did hit the thirty one, twenty eight. Let me, that's, um.
I'm, I'm, maybe twenty four, twenty one.
I thought around that area too possibly.
I don't know.
You, I swear, you're ahead of this game, three to one to one to one.
Okay, I'll say K-State, twenty seven to twenty four.
Jake?
Maybe I would, uh, it was thirty five, thirty five, twenty five, Cass.
I had previously put down twenty eight, twenty seven, Cass.
Yeah.
We lost eleven, one earlier. We had to win by one. Let's get that one back. The winner, someone, just get the win.
We got back last week, which they, they.
Ah, that's.
We got, that's a plus of points back.
That's one.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So I have a.
Um, I'm going to wish that we adjourned the thirty eighth meeting in the Riley County Commission.
Number second, then.
And do the second adjournment.
You moved in second to adjourn the October 30th meeting, Riley County Commission, all favor?